Welcome everybody to our City Council regular meeting. The time is 7:02, September 6th, 2022. So we're calling our meeting to order at this time. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And could we please remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders and military members? Thank you. Monica, could we please get roll call?
Roll call, Councilmember Moran.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia, sorry, Mayor Potem Garcia.
Present.
Mayor Aguilar.
Present.
For the record, Councilmember Soto and Councilmember King are not in attendance, but their absence is excused.
Council, any changes to the agenda at this time? I don't see any. I think there's some requests regarding the consent calendar, but we'll address that when we get there. We're going to go ahead and move on to our citizen comments. The section of agenda allows members of the public to address the council on any item, otherwise none of the agenda. Members of the public, when recognized by myself, should come forward and identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the City Council this evening. Fire on switcher on the agenda this evening, members of the public will be provided an opportunity to address the council as each item is brought up for discussion. Do we have any citizen comments at this time? Yeah, public comment, so you have to come over here to our microphone.
I figured we was going to do that. Okay. I'm here to speak to the issue of John Markle and your subsequent hiring of Chuck Hale. As I have limited time, this prohibits me from truly educating you about the situation. Government Code 54957B2 states that you had to give Markle written notice of his right to have charges against him heard in open session 24 hours before holding the session. Did you? This violation also occurred in Atwater and the town of Dixon. Now, in addition to this code, which made your action to fire Markle null and void, we have a PORAC article, which I will speak to later. This is another White-Brenner instigated incident similar to the attorney firm's modus operandi in the cities of Atwater and Turlock, where both the city manager and police chief were let go so White's team, more compliant with the initiation of legal marijuana drug trade, could be instituted. Aiding and bedding this was a corrupt council with personal financial interests, such as spousal employment and direct interest in the trade. The problem with hiring the latest white-promoted individual, Chuck Hale, is that his word isn't worth squat because of his recent past, including lying about the evidence room in Atwater. Have you ever heard of Larry Morse, the DA of Merced County? Allegations of fraud, rumors about wage garnishments, and being part of a Merced County Sheriff's Warnakey's group, Mr. Warnakey threatened to report it from the Atwater Wenton Times for her printed stories and true investigative journalism, and I have the emails. I made a copy of the article published in the Police Officers Research Association of California by the attorney for the former police chief of Atwater. The website is included. The article highlights, and I will give a copy of that to the city clerk or two copies I have, the article highlights the corruption and collusion between the elected officials and a law firm, White-Brenner, whose cop-out phrase seems to be, quote, "We only do what we are instructed to do by the council," end quote, and ethics and morality are thrown out the window. I am looking forward to a public trial where all of this will be exposed and corroborated. Evidently, whoever's doing your background checks isn't informing you of Hale's warts. Time for you to start questioning rather than just accepting your staff's recommendations. All of this can be prevented if you have competent staff not working with ulterior motives. For those of you who continue to think this will not cost your city and citizens eventually, how long do you think the current risk pool insurers are going to be willing to settle these types of cases for several millions of dollars? And I understand the cost in the Sammy Joseph case has gone up from $2 million to an estimated $6 million. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I just wanted to come up and thank you folks for appointing and today swearing in our new chief, Chuck Hale. I don't know some comments, but I haven't really known Mr. Hale for very long, but I don't know the department, the sheriff's office. As I've said before, they would not retain somebody that is not qualified, and I believe the city has made a proper decision. I know it's a little premature, and I don't want to take away your thunder, Mr. Mayor, but Mr. Hale, thank you for being our chief. Appreciate it.
Any other public comment at this time? Anybody? Go ahead, sir. Go ahead.
I'm Mike Torres. What I have to say tonight is that school started up again and that light up the high school on Peach. You know, that's not doing any good, really. Those kids cross that road, if it's red or green or yellow, they look like bullfighters trying to stop the car when they run across that thing. So, I mean, I don't know what we knew about it, but something has to be done about it.
We're definitely taking notes, and we'll definitely try to address that as soon as possible. Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment at this time? Anybody on the phone? Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to announcements and reports. Vanessa, do you want us to move the award presentation? Or the sworn in first? Yes, okay, so we're going to go ahead and move on to our awards presentations and proclamations. So we have the sworn in of Chief of Police Charles Chuck Hale by myself. So I'll get started. Like I mentioned in other meetings, I truly believe this is what's best for our community. Chuck's demonstrated of capable of undertaking such a responsibility for our city, and I cannot thank him enough for taking that leap of faith and trusting us, trusting the city. I know he's going to do great. As an interim police chief, you know, he did great things. You know, he was hands-on, responded well to the community. I mean, we had, you know, we planned together a community public safety event right off the bat, and he was all hands-on, all for going out to the community, interacting. He's taken on, for example, other responsibilities that, you know, we didn't expect. You know, he's very technologically savvy. So I know he's going to be doing great. So thank you so much. Thank you, Chuck's family, for being here tonight. It's going to be, it's exciting for the city. I think that's what's best for the community. Obviously, you see the support you received from their department in previous meetings and, you know, just in general, expressing that you've done great as a leader. So I'm very happy tonight. I'll let the council say any words, other words, and Vanessa, before we get going with the sworn in. Councilmember Jose Moran?
Yes, thank you. So congratulations again, chief. I forgot to take a picture earlier of you in that blue uniform, but I'll save that for a little bit later. And I still, I think that, you already know this, but when you came in, I think that you knew that I always had big expectations from everyone, and I will continue to actually deliver bigger now. And that is something that I expect with, from everyone. I always had big expectations, and I know that we won't be let down. So, and everything has to be done for the benefit of the majority of the community and by all of us. And I'm not sure if I would have done what you've done, but, you know, leaving the career for over almost 30 years, but, you know, that has to say a lot. And the commitment that has to be there for this community to be able to do something like that and for your department and for everybody else. So we have a lot of work to do. What we, I say "we" as a community, as a council and as a department, what has been done and accomplished in the last 10 months or so, we have a lot more work to do ahead of us. So I know that I don't need to say be ready because I know that you're ready. So, and I appreciate the support of the family because he's going to be spending a lot of hours here. So congratulations.
Mayor Potem Garcia?
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. First of all, I say I don't think we could have picked a better person to handle the city of Livingston today. I know we've been going through a lot, and the support from his family, his wife and his children, that's a big thing in itself. And to be honest, I was nervous when he first came here just because of what was going on. I'll say the pressure that was on us and then, well, on him. He took a big risk coming, and just in these last few months that he's been here, you can see the change in that department, the morale and staff. So, and thanks for the, his former department, I should say now, for being here, supporting him. And that shows in itself what a great leader we have today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vanessa?
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and members of the public. For me, more than a congratulations, it's really a thank you. So thank you very much, Chief Hale, for choosing to stay with Livingston, choosing to continue to lead this department. I know the department, it's very appreciative of having you here with them. And I know Chief Hale has a vision, and you have my full support and commitment to continue that vision on.
Thank you, Vanessa. And once again, thanks, family. Thank you, Sheriff's Department, for being here. Thank you, simple police department, thank you for being here, and citizens. Chuck, just come forward. All right, sir, could you please hold your right arm and repeat after me, please? I.
I.
Your name?
Charles D. Hale.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That will support.
I will support.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true.
I will bear true.
Faith and allegiance.
Faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this.
I will take this.
Obligation freely.
Obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will, well.
And I will will.
And faithfully.
Faithfully.
Discharge duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Retired UnderSheriff Jason Goins and my law enforcement mentor is going to pin the badge, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
Should I draw blood?
Go ahead.
Chief, you want to introduce your family and some of your colleagues?
Yes, so first off, I couldn't be here and couldn't be doing this without my family. First and foremost, my wife, Amanda, sitting in the middle between my two children. It's my daughter, Kerrigan, my son, Kayden, my mom, my sister, Charlotte, and my brother-in-law, Tim. My mom's name is Sue, but it's Mom. Thank you, Sheriff's Office, for being here. Thank you for the years of support. Thank you, citizens, for being here to support me. Mostly, my department. I'm so excited to get to work. Each and every one of you mean a lot to me. We got a lot of work to do, like the council member said, but we'll get it done, and we're going to do it together. Thank you, explorers. I can't leave you guys out. You guys are such a big part of the community. I'm so proud of you. We're actually going to turn the lobby of the police department into a shrine for all the good work that you do in the community and all the awards that you've won. Thank you, guys, all for being here.
Thank you, Chief. Once again, thank you, everybody, for coming in today and supporting our new police chief. So I present to you the Livingston Police Chief, Chuck Hale. We're going to be taking a small recess for photographs and...
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody, for staying with us during that recess. We're gonna go ahead and continue with our meeting. We're gonna go back for announcements and reports. City staff announcements and reports, Vanessa?
Yes, we had our police and recreation department. Police stepped out, so Jackie will come forward.
Perfect.
Good evening, everyone. Well, we have an exciting report tonight because, as you know, on Sunday, we turn 100 years old. And I do want you to know, be sure to come in Friday because Vanessa's gonna dress up in a full birthday attire and greet everybody. So, I'm kidding. But anyway, on Sunday, it's pretty exciting. People are really happy about it. It starts at 2:00. And some really neat news is that Foster Farms got ahold of me and they said they wanted to provide a free barbecue chicken dinner for the residents, all those that come to the event. So, they're prepared for quite a few people and it's just gonna be a great day. You'll get to see the special exhibits in the museum. The mayor's gonna unveil the plaque that goes up on the building and, you know, and we'll also be honoring our 9/11 during part of the ceremony. So, be sure, people out there, to come out. It's gonna be a historic moment in time and you don't wanna miss it.
Thank you, Jackie. And yeah, thank you Foster Farms for reaching out and willing to partake in this community event. So, looking forward to being there on the 11th. Vanessa and our PD, we could come back to PD. So, city manager announcements and reports?
Sure. Mayor, council, I just wanted to share that we are preparing a general plan update workshop and that is scheduled to take place on September 27 at 6:00 PM. I will continue to remind our council, our public, our commissioners, it's gonna be a joint workshop with our planning commissioners and our council and the public. And that's it.
Thank you so much. City council member, nonsense and reports, Councilmember Jose Moran.
Nothing to report at this time.
Mayor Pretim Garcia?
I don't have anything to report, thank you.
And then myself, just looking forward to the 11th, like we stated earlier. Also participated in the soccer, youth soccer opening ceremony. It was a great event, a lot of people out there. Nice to see the kids back playing soccer and hope everybody has a good season. So, we're gonna go ahead and move on to awards, I mean, to consent agenda. Items on the content calendar are considered routine or non-controversial when enacted by one vote unless separate action is requested by the city manager, city council member. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council or city manager request that that specific item be removed. We did receive an email from our council member, Maria Soto, regarding items in the consent calendar, number four and number six. So, I'll go ahead and pull those out to get an opportunity to answer those questions for number four and number six. But for the rest of the consent calendar, council, wishes, motions?
Yes, I would like to have item number nine pulled. And then, once we pull it, I would like to divide that into two different items, item 9A and item 9B.
Okay. And then, so the rest of the calendar, council, any motions?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mayor Pretim Garcia, do we have a second?
Second.
We have Mayor Pretim Garcia with the motion, second by Councilmember Moran, Monica?
Roll call, councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Councilmember, Mayor Pretim Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of 3-0.
Thank you. And then regarding number four on the consent calendar, the question was, am I legal to discuss check number 7338 CSJV Risk Management 279,548, 7339 CJV Risk Management 95,196? Please explain to the public that these charges, who authorized these charges? Were authorized by the city manager and not the council.
Yeah, so just to be clear, since she asked for legal, I think this is best answered by administration and so I'll go ahead and let them answer and identify them.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for the question. That payment is actually a regularly budgeted payment for our self-insurance related to employment risk management as well as our pool liability and vehicle insurance.
Thank you. And then, I'll go ahead and move on. Any other questions, council, regarding this item?
Yes. So, can, I don't know who, but, so that the residents out there, if you can add, expand on it, what is, what are the services being provided by Valley Risk Management? I mean, I know, but just...
Sure, absolutely. So, the Central San Joaquin Valley Risk Management Association is a group that provides oversight and insurance for local agencies. There are a number of agencies within the Central Valley that contract with this group for that purpose. So, they handle all of our employment risk management services, including our mandatory training for supervisors and non-supervisors. They provide, again, our vehicle insurance. They process our claims for any losses in the event we have any. In addition, they also cover our workers' compensation and those related claims as well. So, it's standard insurance that many businesses or most businesses have to engage in and we belong to this group that affords us discounts on those costs.
Any further questions or clarifications, council? No? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on to a public comment regarding this item since we pulled it off. Anybody have any public comment regarding this item? No? Okay, we're gonna bring it back to council. Motions, additional questions?
I'll make the motion.
A motion by Mayor Pretim Garcia, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Jose Moran, Monica?
Roll call, councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Mayor Pretim Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of 3-0.
Thank you. So, item number six, which is approved amendment to the standard agreement for the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program. This is more of just a comment on Councilmember Soto's email. It says, "Please share below info." It says, "We wanna make sure that the public is aware that we did help small businesses in our community" and stated that she is the board, one of the board of directors for the Merced County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and advocate for, she did advocate for small businesses through the Worknet Merced County Department of Workforce Investment for a total of $800,004 that were given to businesses in Livingston through COVID Relief Fund. So, specific to the programs are Merced County Ready to Open Small Business Assistance Program, seven businesses for the city of Livingston, $87,000. State of California's, California Small Business COVID-19 Relief Grant Program 2021, 58 businesses for Livingston totaling over $700,000. And micro business COVID relief grants, three businesses for over $7,500 for a total of over $800,000 that businesses in Livingston received through other means. I think it was just a comment. Anything to add?
Yeah, that's a great summary of the services that have already been rendered. This will take those funds that were unused from the CDBG block grant and provide it to our residents to provide continued relief on their utility payments.
Thank you so much. We'll take it out for any public comment at this time. We'll bring it back to council.
I have a comment real quick.
Go ahead.
Or a question, both, I think. In regards to the information provided by Ms. Soto, is that information about those, those assist, or that assistance to our, to the Livingston businesses through the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce from Merced County? Or was that, were those funds? Because my understanding is that our funds, that through the city of Livingston, there was no businesses being assisted. I just wanna clarify that. My understanding is that those, that information is not from the city of Livingston or not connected with any of the grant money that we had?
Yeah, I don't think it's related to it. I think it was just a point that businesses have received in some other ways assistance through the COVID relief funding. But yeah, I don't think it's related to our grant. I think it was through other means.
Okay, just wanna make sure we're clear or that I'm clear on that.
I think, because I'm looking at her email, which I know the, it says specifically it was through the Worknet Merced County Department Workforce Investment Fund. So, that would be where the source of the funds would have come from.
Okay, I just want, because, well, I'm not sure to who that email was sent, but thank you for that clarification. And then, so also in regards to this item, there are $166,606 and $96 still in that account by the city being held or being held or here at the city of Livingston, right?
Correct. And these will redirect those funds to be able to afford the Livingston residents relief or payment toward their unpaid utilities.
Yes. So, what I would, based on conversations with, I really did not have an opportunity to talk to a lot of business owners, only but two people over the weekend and then again, because not everybody was answering the phone. But I did have an opportunity to talk to two business owners in the city and I think there's probably still an opportunity to provide those, that availability of some of those services to some of our local businesses. I don't know. I wish self-help had been here, because I don't think they're here, to figure out exactly, other than, what exactly had been done to reach out to our local businesses even though there has been plenty, I guess, of marketing based on the report. And then, I mean, I know about it, but it's because I've been doing a lot of reading and somehow staying informed. But that is probably not the case all the time. So, I would like for this council to consider, I mean, I don't see, actually, I think it would be a great benefit to our residents to have additional funds for more assistance. But at the same time, for us to consider maintaining some of those funds for businesses' purposes, for businesses' support. And then, if I have to go out there and talk to, you know, businesses myself, then I would have to do that, but that's fine. But I wanna make sure that, that we have those funds still available if they are requested or needed. Because if we moved every, the entire amount for, as requested, then no funds will be available for businesses at all.
Not under this funding, correct. This proposal does move their remaining unused funds to our local residences. And they did do campaigns and marketing, as you mentioned. They actually came to Livingston and did foot patrol, if you will, walking around to local businesses in the downtown area to solicit this funding and had no takers. But that is just the result of what they've shared with us and we've not had any outreach that we're aware of to ask for these dollars since it was originally implemented.
Because these funds have to be used by...
November 1st, 2023.
23. So, that is more than a year, like about a year and a few months, five, three, three months or so, like about 15 months from now. So, we can even figure out and say, you know what? If within six months, those funds are not used, then we can approve and say, go ahead and move them over for residential purposes or, you know, for residents. Can we do that? Is that...
So, then now, so right now, the request is to move the unused funding towards the program that assists with rental assistance, right?
Resident utility bills.
Is that only for utilities?
Yeah, it's for their, it's for their city services that they're past due on. And we have a high number of accounts that are past due that this would serve the citizens of Livingston very well.
So far, we have been assisted, over 130,000, is that correct?
So, as of, yes, the original funding that we had, we actually provided 100% of the available funds to the residents
So, there's no more...
that were available, no. And that's the reason we were also repurposing these dollars because there's still a need.
So, one could argue that the need is more in the utility assistance program than the small business program. That's why the recommendation is to move over those funds?
Yes, that's correct. We do have a high number of accounts that our residents are past due on and we've recently issued about 200 red tags to have services shut off. And so, that's the reason the recommendation came forward, to assist those residents.
Mayor, if you may.
Yes, go ahead.
So, for this program, councilmember Moran, when CDBG, the self-help program, they send us the report, they've been providing this updates that only two businesses have applied for the funding. However, none of the businesses have followed through with all of the requirements for them to be eligible for the funding. So, even though they have applied, there wasn't any approval of any money to be given to these two businesses. So, they had two applications come in and $0 to be supplied to any business that put in an application. And I would figure that it is part of the requirements that the grant requires a lot of documentation from those businesses and potentially may not be able, or the businesses may not have followed through and provided all of that. So, they, out of the two applications, zero were awarded any dollars. So, now, we have, we have the CDBG funding that helped the utility, the residents with their utility bills. And on that, right now, we actually have a waiting list that, that self-help has been... being tracked of in order to, to let the residents know that there is a possibility where the city can transfer this money into, from the business side into the residential side, and they could, they could have some relief. So, that is the, um, we, we were doing this, um, the steps to transfer this money from the business side to the residential side. However, it is a requirement that we provide a resolution from the council to the CDBG program, and that's why you have this in front of you today.
So I-
Because in order to fulfill the, um, the, the, in order to fulfill the request of the waiting list that we have to, um, to now.
So I, I would go with, I, I myself would go with the recommendation from staff. It's, it sounds like the need is more with individual households and, and families. Um, there's obviously a waiting list, and then you guys issued over two hundred, you said red tags, and, and that's a concern to me. Uh, I think the families and households could benefit from this transfer of money and, and provide that assistance to those most in need at this time. Um, so I, I would say, uh, for me, I would, I would go with that, with the recommendation and, and, uh, you know, reach out to those people that really are in need and help them out.
Do, do, sorry, go ahead. Do you have an amount of, what was the amount that was used last time that was available for utilities?
Yeah, so the amount that was originally afforded for local residences was a hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars, and it's been fully expended.
A hundred and thirty-one?
Uh-huh.
But, but that was utilities plus rental assistance, or was that only, only?
It's just for utilities.
Okay, okay, just wanted to double check.
It's just for utilities, yes.
So, that was a hundred and thirty-some thousand, and this is a hundred and sixty-six. Even if we do fifty thousand for businesses, and that a hundred and sixteen for, uh, for utilities, that would still be very useful and helpful to continue that assistance, right?
Yeah, any amount we can afford the residents as relief would be, would be helpful.
Okay. So I, I would, I would kind of suggest and have that conversation, thinking about, you know, not just depleting it entirely for one, and even, and even if, if, if within six months, those fifty thousand dollars that could be designated for business support is not used, then by all means, let's move it over to, uh, residents' opportunities to, uh, support them in their, um...
How long is the waiting list for the utilities? Is, is there a lot of people on the waiting list?
So we'd have to evaluate the total number of inquiries. We have had inquiries since the funding has disappeared, um, but we'd have to come back with that final total now, a, along with the actual past due amount, to make, um, a good recommendation to provide the relief to the residents and, and what would be remaining that could be available to those businesses.
But there's no, there hasn't been no inquiries from businesses, right? I mean, there's only those two.
Not that I'm aware of.
So there's, I mean, if there was a need, uh, evident need for businesses, they'll be reaching out, I would say. Um, I don't know. Um...
I'm just thinking, because I, I really didn't have a chance, because it was a three-day weekend, I, I really didn't have a chance to, to figure out. I mean, and then in three days, it's hard to figure out the reason why, why businesses, I mean, kind of in a way, it's like, people out there call it free money, I mean, why would businesses not be interested if they knew about it?
And it would, it would be interesting.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just curious, you know, just, I mean, those are just my thoughts. I mean, you know, that's why we're, it's good to have a conversation and figure out, uh, you know, be educated on the subject. So, that's what, that's where I'm, where I'm at.
I was just gonna add, and, and hearing, uh, Councilmember Soto's account of the funds that were provided at the county level may have absorbed what would have been perhaps available or needed at the local level.
Yeah, it sounds like there was a significant amount handed out to businesses here in town, and that's maybe why. Motions?
So I'll make the motion. Um, just before, though, I do agree with the, the mayor and, uh, what staff recommends, so I'll make the motion.
Thank you, sir. The motion by Mayor Paton Garcia, do we have a second? I'll go ahead and second it. Monica?
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Mayor Paton Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of three zero.
Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and take, or go to item number nine, and you wanted to split nine A, nine B, you stated, correct? Uh, so the item is approved the addition of senior administrative service manager job description and corresponding salary schedule revision to existing job descriptions. How do you want to divide it?
So my understanding is, and, and maybe, I don't, I'm not sure if anybody else can explain it better than I can, but there's two different separate, uh, I guess, bundles or sections that, 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 one of them includes the, uh, approving the additional, the addition of a senior administrative service manager job description and the corresponding salary schedule, and the other part, which I think could be, um, nine B is, are the revisions to existing job descriptions due to technical adjustments from the budget adoption and other miscellaneous updates. So, I would consider the addition of a senior administrator, administrative service manager job description as nine A, and the rest of it, and corresponding salary schedule, and the revisions to the existing job descriptions as nine B. I might-
Yeah, so you're correct, Councilmember Moran. So there are three distinct requests, but two, as you mentioned. So A would be the new position, and then B would be those technical adjustments for job descriptions, uh, associated with approved positions that were part of the budget errata, and also, uh, technical adjustments or other revisions to existing job descriptions for previously approved positions.
All right, so-
You have specific questions about it?
Yes. Before I get into the questions, or... My wish is to, for me to have more time to be able to, to analyze this item, nine A, to be able to, uh, be comfortable making a decision either way, without going into details. So, but before I make a motion, or I could make a motion, I want to have, I want to give the opportunity to others to, uh...
Staff, like, I guess Vanessa, or, or anybody want to talk about it, or address it?
Yeah, I'll start and, and defer. So this new position is being created for multiple purposes. Um, across the organization, in the managerial and confidential, or, excuse me, group, we have multiple, uh, areas where there are levels of positions, where we create a career ladder, and that ensures that people will stay with the organization throughout their career by giving them opportunity for growth that they don't have to seek elsewhere. The requirements of this position are such that it is specialized, and we currently have a base level, uh, appointment of a administrative services manager, but without that career ladder, we miss an opportunity to create succession planning and to offer retention for somebody who has, uh, otherwise outgrown the existing position. So by creating this new position, we create stability within the organization, we maintain our city staff, and we afford them opportunity for growth internally. I defer to the city manager, if she'd like to add anything to this position.
Thank you, Jennifer. Yes, um, Mayor, city council members, um, this is an approach that we are following, the same as we have in our finance team or, or administration team, where we have a level of, of ladder in the positions, and, um, it really just provides for that clear, um, managerial and administrative duties. Um, they're separated, and, and they will, and, and in the future, uh, they will be able to provide that, um, that training and development for, um, as we transition, we have a, a, an aging, um, staff, um, in many of our departments, and to me, it's important that we have, that, that we do it, um, that we pass down that knowledge responsibly, not in a week, or two weeks, or, or a month, um, because, um, because at the end of the day, our operations need to be, we need to be responsible, getting somebody fully trained and fully comfortable with the, with, with the job that they're doing, or that they're going to do. Um, we have, speaking from experience, we have had twenty-plus years of experience walk out the door, they've retired, they're very happy where, um, where, where they've moved. Um, some of our, our staff have, have moved out of state, and, and we really can go back and, and, and provide that training, and it's very costly for city staff, it's very costly for, 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 for the council, for the community, because now we're talking about having to, um, it takes us triple the time, or, or four times as long to get something done. We are pulling resources from, from, um, outside agencies, consultants, in order to get one task complete. So, um, my plan, and, and, and the plan for our police, from our police department, is that we are responsible at, um, planning for the future, that we set our departments, um, to success, and that we are able to provide that transitional, uh, training for, for, for our future staff. Um, this is not for, for the current staff that it's on board, this is, this is a step that you're taking forward for the future of the city, uh, the future staff that will be here.
Thank you. So it is for the police department, correct?
I'm sorry?
It's specific to police?
This, 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 uh, senior administrative services manager position, it is in the police department, and it is, uh, a model that it's reflective of the senior accountant position that we have in our administration department.
Perfect. All right. So basically, it's, it's one item, because it's packaged in regards to the, the discretion of the position, um, wages, every, you know, it's, so it's a whole, a whole deal, right?
They're, they're both part of a budget, um, analysis. So it's, these items are part of our, our budget, um, process. We were, we brought the budget to council, uh, we saw the need, we brought it, we brought it back, and we're asking the council to, to approve this recommendation.
So yes, to be clear, this is all, this has already, uh, been budgeted for, uh, so it's approving that, that change in the budget?
It will be approving the change in the budget. It is the, the dollar amount, it will be absorbed right now, because we have planned vacancies in our department. However, if approved, it will be budgeted moving forward in future years.
So it's not necessarily a fiscal impact, or gonna affect our general, uh...
Yes, there, there's no impact on the general fund at the moment.
Okay, so because of the vacancy, so it's just gonna be observed, and then moving forward, then like next year's budget, then that's something that'll be budgeted for moving forward, correct?
Correct, correct. And the idea is, as Vanessa mentioned, is that this senior-level position comes with the expertise available to step into it, with the opportunity to then train, uh, somebody to be able to take over that position in the future.
And then, um, just clarification, um, saying that, uh, it's not gonna affect our budget because there are vacancies, is that gonna affect the level of service we provide? For example, if there's a police officer vacancy, um, will, will we be able to fill, still fill those vacancies, or is it more on the administrative side that we're speaking about those vacancies?
Any vacancies, if budgeted, will be filled.
Perfect, thank you. We're clarifying that. Um, any other questions, clarifications? I mean, um, obviously, I, I agree with that. I mean, we've had multiple discussions in regards to always planning for the future.
I was gonna say.
Oh. Go ahead, what was that?
Talking number eight, on number eight, right?
No, we're talking about number nine.
You're going to the next one?
Yeah, give me a second, let me just finish, and then we'll open it for public comment, okay? Give, give me one second. So, um, I know we've had multiple discussions about the need for stabilizing the city, uh, planning for the future, and, um, I do appreciate, um, uh, you know, the, you know, thought and, and work was done to, to develop a position that's similar to our finance department, uh, where they could stabilize, you know, our administrators and the police department. So, um, I don't know, Mr. Councilmember Moran, what specific questions or clarifications you need, um, but I'm, I'm okay with it. I understand the need for it, um, the stability, I mean, that we've been asking for, that's only gonna solidify with our new police chief, and it's gonna help out the department overall. Um, I don't know, Mayor Paton Garcia, have you have any additional questions or comments?
No, um, I've heard it all. Um, so, yeah, my questions have been answered.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, I will take it out for public comment at this time, and then we'll come back for additional questions or comments. Uh, public comment regarding this item for number nine? Okay, we'll bring it back to council for any additional comments or questions or motions?
Uh, yes, well, there's questions which sometimes could be interpreted as, just depends how, how it is interpreted, but, you know, questions or concerns, um, like I said, I, I, well, we're here already anyways. So, I, I do take decisions responsibly, it's, it's, and that is why, because I want to be responsible, and, and when I'm, I'm thinking or making decisions, very rarely do, do I ever consider any short-term or midterm decisions without including long-term decisions. And, uh, I, I do believe in, in, in responsibility, and whenever it comes before me to consider anything, I wanted it to be strong and tight, and, and without having to come back later and say, well, you know, this is, this is not, you know, there's, there's, there's concerns here, here and there. So, and, and just to be more specific, and, and, and I guess, you know, expanding on this, um, my concerns, uh, if you go, let's see, it is, um, if you go to page two, uh, it talks about salaries, additional salaries, salaries for the senior administrative services manager will be upset, offset by exist, existing salary savings, which, which has not been spent, which were, uh, uh, savings in the police department from ex, existing vacancies through one vacant lieutenant position, and, you know, the vacant, uh, code, code compliance officer. So, I understand that those funds are there right now, and it's not gonna, it's not gonna affect any other, you know, or the, the general budget. Um, but moving forward, those funds are there, but the only way that we will be able to, to pay for those, for this additional cost will be by increasing the budget next year, and next year, and the next year. So we're not gonna have an options, like it's either this or this. Council will not, will not have, will not have the option to decide whether or not we want to have it. This is what is, what it takes to be able to fund our positions that we have, which right now, it, it, more or less, if my, my numbers are not wrong, it will be roughly close to twenty-four thousand dollars additional funds that we have to add to the budget next year to be able to fund this new position, because we're absorbing the, the funds from one of our current, well, no, wait. This current position will still be there, which is the, what is, what is the title of the current position, the?
Administrative Services Manager, so that would be essentially-
That will still be there.
It'll still be there, um, but it will be unfilled, because the intention is to backfill that at some future need, at some point in the future when the need arises.
So let's say that in two years, that this new, this position that became vacant is not filled up, but we're still gonna need twenty, roughly about twenty-four thousand or more, because every year is gonna be the three percent COLA agreement, uh, roughly about twenty-four, twenty-four thousand, and then about twenty-seven thousand or so, and then thirty, and then, and then so on. So which means that eventually, regardless of whether or not we have those funds available, we have to increase the budget just to be able to cover those expenses, right?
That's correct, and we, we also have a five-year projection that, that indicates that we'll have an increase in revenues that would offset all of our salary expenses that are expected to grow at a similar rate.
Yes, and, and then also, which means that- And, and then also, which means that from the current position that we have right now, jumping to the next senior, to this new position that we're trying to, to come up with, there's, there's a jump, there's a, a gap in between of 39% salary increase.
And that's consistent with our other management and confidential group, where we have a senior-level officer.
Yes, so I heard that before, but, but like I said, I, I need to give myself more time, and more, and, and, and obtain that information, to be able to compare apples to apples, and, and, because right now, I'm not saying that I don't believe you, but I don't believe anyone. I like to have the data in front of me, I like to have the numbers in front of me, so that I can, I mean, it's not that I don't believe you guys, or anybody else, it's just a way to, to say that I, I would like, I would feel more comfortable, I would feel more comfortable having information in front of me, and, and comparing it apples to apples, or if you're saying that this position here is very similar to this, then, you know, look at it. I know that earlier, I was provided with, with the salary schedules for the last five years, I haven't had a really a chance to go back and look at it. Like I said, all I needed, I just, it's just me, I need more time to feel comfortable, to make, you know, I, I, I hate to be put in this situation where, that I'm at, that I'm at right now. Because when I don't have everything that I wish to have in front of me, I have to make a year and a decision. And, and I dislike when I have to do that, either way.
Just real quick, Doug, go ahead.
Because I don't know if this affects you, because we only have three members tonight, because it involves resolution, potentially expenditure money, it would require all three votes in order to pass? So if anybody abstained, or did anything other than that, then it would, the motion would fail. So I just say that, so that you can take that into consideration when you're figuring out what you wanna do.
So if you're requesting more time, or you're not gonna vote, it wouldn't pass anyway, so if you wanna?
That was, that was, that's what I said at the beginning, that I, I wish I had more time.
So you wanna move it to the next council meeting? Is that what you're saying? Or you wanna take an hour, and, and getting? You know? What's the urgency of getting disapproved? I mean, are you guys ready to appoint somebody, or two weeks would work?
Well, I, I wanna say, Mayor, that the revisions that are the technical adjustments for the, from the budget, we can't move forward with posting the positions until they get ratified. So those are really important. We can bring the other item back.
Like I said, that was, that was my, my intention, even before we started this conversation. Because I don't wanna kill the item. I just, I, I was hoping to bring it back, but, I mean, you know, it was.
So then there, there wouldn't, would be the, any issue then to bring it back in the next council meeting?
Is there an urgency to do it now, or are you guys okay with two weeks? Or, yeah, next council meeting? Be honest, like if we need it now, like, you know, and so?
If okay, we could, we could take Councilmember Moran's option to break up this item into two different decisions, and we will bring back item 9A. But that way, it will give us the revisions, the technical adjustments, it will give us the ability to put, to post the positions that we have vacant at the moment, and those were approved through the budget already.
Already, perfect. So we can make a motion for the 9B section, and, and then we could come back in two weeks with the 9A.
Can you, just for the motion purposes, if you are gonna make a motion, can you be really clear about what we're, what the motion involves, so that there's no discrepancies?
Well, let me see what I think, but sometimes what I think is not, okay, so what I'm thinking is, and you gotta help, help me with the language here, is just to bring this item back, nine, item 9A, which is the resolution approving the addition of a senior administrative services manager, job description, and corresponding salary, salary, including Exhibit A, which is a description of the job.
So you want that?
To bring it back at a future meeting.
You wanna be specific and say, next council meeting? Will that give you enough time?
I don't know, it just depends on, 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 so that's why I leave it, I wanna leave it to a future meeting, because if we say specific, and then I don't have, what I, what I wish to have, so I wanna leave it to a future meeting, it could be the next one, if, you know.
Okay.
So I just wanna be safe for everyone involved.
Language-wise, is that okay?
So we can, I don't believe we're doing this by resolution, or we're gonna pull it out by the res, of the resolution, we would do it by minute action, which would be to approve the job description. We could approve this salary schedule, because just approving the salary schedule itself doesn't create any kind of new money. Budget adjustment, we would not be able to do as part of this, that would have to come back.
There's no budget adjustment required for this item.
Aren't you having to reroute, even if it's clerical, like rerouting money from one?
No, it's department-level budget and salaries, and so there's no, there's no movement required.
So with that caveat, then you can, if, if, if that, because I haven't seen that part, but then you could do that, and then just?
Okay, so the, the description and the salary schedule revisions?
Schedule revisions, and then, can, I guess you're gonna have to explain to me the technical adjustments from the budget adoption, but, but just to make sure that that doesn't trigger anything, but, but those for two issues, you can do, you will have to pull them out of the resolution, and you'll have to do it by minute action, because resolutions require three votes, instead of majority of those present.
And so that is why I, I wanna make sure that we include Exhibit A, which is the description of the item, of the position.
Perfect. So there's a motion to come back at a later date, regarding whatever you said already. Is that good, Doug?
What, what, what did we motion? You lost me on that one.
Okay, and, Councilmember Moran, repeat.
I move to bring back this resolution at a later council meeting, which is the resolution approving the addition of a senior administrative service manager, and its job description, and the corresponding salary schedule.
So you, so I, as I understand your motion, it's to continue that all to the next meeting?
To a future meeting.
To a future meeting, to a date-be-determined meeting?
Mm-hmm.
So that would be everything, correct? That's what I just heard, I heard everything that, because that, you just gave me the list of everything that was in?
No, because, well, there's one piece, the last piece.
The last part, which is the technical revisions to the existing job description.
Which is 9B.
Yes.
So you just want 9B to be the technical revisions to the?
No, right now, 9A, it's anything related to the senior administrative service manager job, which is the position, the creation of the new position, the description of, of the job, and the corresponding salary schedule, which includes Exhibit A, which is just Exhibit A, it's just a description of the job.
9B is the technical review?
For the other.
The other positions, correct.
And that's the one that's more urgent, there's more urgency to get that moving as soon as possible. So?
They're, they're both urgent, but this one doesn't need, the technical adjustments are already approved, we just need them to be, come through council.
It would be to, well, it would be to continue everything but the technical adjustments that are listed in this, in the staff report, and those would be pulled out and voted on separately tonight as a minute action, is that correct? That represent what you want your motion to be?
Yes. So just to be specific, but yes, yes, anything later than Exhibit B, that's 9B. Anything before 9B, it's 9A.
Perfect, okay, we have a motion?
So then, just to be real clear, that in the staff report, everything following Exhibit A, so Exhibit B would be the first one, then through L, would be included as part of the minute action that you're asking to be pulled out and voted, and voted on separately tonight, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So then, what I would first say is, let's, let's do a motion to continue this item to a date to be determined in the future, with the exception of those items, those technical amendments that are represented in the staff report, Exhibits B through L.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion by?
Yes, yes.
A motion by Councilmember Jose Moran, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mayor Tim Garcia, Mayor Protim Garcia, Monica, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of 3-0.
All right, so now we are going to the 9B, which is?
So the motion here would be to, to approve by minute action, taking it out of the previous resolution, so approve by minute action, the items that are in the staff report, starting with Exhibit B, and going through Exhibit L.
Who wants to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
So?
I'll second it.
Okay, perfect, well, motion by Councilmember Jose Moran, and second by Mayor Protim Garcia, Monica?
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Councilmember, Mayor Protim Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of 3-0.
Perfect, thank you. We're gonna go ahead and move on to our public hearings, item number 10, public hearing.
Mayor, are we gonna give the chief the opportunity?
Oh yes, chief, you had a staff report? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Evening again, mine's gonna be super brief, most of you know, on Wednesday, and I've, I've got to apologize about the date mix-up on the posting that we had on Facebook. Unfortunately, we had a homicide in the city of Livingston, in the area of Walnut and Francie. There's not much that I can tell you about it at this point, but I can tell you that our detectives are working on it diligently, around the clock, in fact, they're still over at the PD right now, following up on leads, so I want the council, mayor, and the citizens to know that, that we're all over it, and we're working on it. One thing I will say is, it looks like there is a possibility that our new Flock LPR cameras are gonna play a big part in, in us moving forward on this case. That's all I have right now.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate your efforts, you know, we are, we're very sorry for the family member of, of the situation, and I know you guys are gonna do your best to, you know, hold us responsible. I have another question, or, or something related to that, or that came upon regarding that situation, is the, the lighting in that area, I guess it'll be for, in, in, you know, for the city manager, PD, and public works, the lighting in the area is really bad, it's really dark, that whole Francie by those apartment complexes on Walnut. And, and I have, people have brought it up in the past, I know that we, it's come up in the past, but I think, just considering the situation, and I think we should definitely address that area, and, and put a light post some way somehow, because it is dark, I've, in the past few nights, I actually went over there and drove, and, and it's a really dark area.
Right.
And I think that would, you know, help out, at least, you know, to a certain degree.
When I got on scene, it is extremely dark in the area, I don't wanna say that that played a part in the unfortunate and tragic event that unfolded, but it is extremely dark in that area. And you just reminded me of something else, I wanted the citizens to rest assured, I am your chief now, but that night, I did make the conscious decision to call the sheriff's office, and have them assist us with processing the crime scene. I had a couple people out on COVID that couldn't respond, and I, I made the command decision at that time to, to call in extra resources. But it is our investigation, and we have control over it now, just in case someone saw the sheriff equipment out, out there at the crime scene, we were out there as well.
Now, thank you, and then, you know, that's what it's all about, you know, using our resources and partnerships, and helping each other out, so thank you for following up with that, and yeah, if we could somehow, Vanessa, address the lighting situation there, I'll have further conversations with you guys, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Any other questions, council? No, okay, we're good, thank you, chief. We're gonna go ahead and move on to our public hearing, item number 10, public hearing, site plan and design review, application number 20, 22-01, duplex at 846 Sixth Street, a request to construct a 2,270 square foot residential structure consisting of two new attached dwelling units on property located at 846 Sixth Street.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, city staff, members of the audience, I'm Miguel Galvez, the contract planner with JP Anderson on behalf of the city of Livingston. The item before you this evening is consideration, as you mentioned, site plan and design review application 20, 22-1, duplex at 846 Sixth Street. This is a request to develop a new duplex by the applicant Rene Moreno. The project site is located on the west side of Sixth Street, north of F Street, at 846 Sixth Street. We can see it there. The subject property is vacant, and is surrounded by properties that are developed with single-family and multifamily dwellings, as can be seen on the aerial. The project site, which is identified with a little dot, is surrounded by properties that have a general plan designation of medium-density residential. The subject site is also surrounded by properties that are zone R2, medium-density residential. The general plan map is on the left, the zoning map is on the right. The property itself runs on Sixth Street, it measures 50 feet wide by 117 feet in depth, and it totals approximately 5,830 square feet. Full street dedication and furniture improvements have already been installed. Here are, here are recent pictures of the property on the northern property line, it borders a duplex that is also owned by the applicant, that's so you can see the car there on the right. The southern property line has a six-foot-high fence, and you can see the, what the property looks like right now, the applicant had started construction, he did some of that work at risk before the approval, but he's now moving forward with the land use entitlement application. Again, the applicant is proposing to develop a 2,270 square foot, single-family, excuse me, single-story duplex, along with four parking spaces. Each unit will consist of 1,135 square feet of living area, a 22-square-foot porch. Each unit will have three bedrooms, two bathrooms, and a landscaped area. Garbage totes in the HVAC units will be located on the side property along, along the southern side yard. Here's a copy of the site plan, the property will share the existing driveway on Sixth Street, it's actually wide enough for both properties, and alley access will provide access from, from the rear there, so two units, two parking spaces along Sixth Street, and two from the alley. Stormwater will be collected and discharged in the landscaped areas there, you can see with the trees and landscaping. Here's a copy of the, the floor plan, there's a living room, dining room, near the kitchen, three bedrooms, two bathrooms, a laundry room, and again, the entrance will have a porch. The duplex structures will include composition roofs, stucco walls, and the doors, again, the entrance doors will be served by a small porch, you can kinda see it protruding out. Here's a sample of the colors, the building will be identical to the duplex that's already developed next to the property north of the site, as shown on the picture below, so it'll be an exact duplicate of that, both properties are owned by the applicant, Rene Moreno. Issues, there are no designer zoning issues, the project meets all R2 development standards. When we look at general plan consistency, all development projects need to be evaluated for consistency with the city's general plan, staff has identified these general plan goals, policies, and objectives where the project has been found to be consistent with the 1999 general plan. They're listed here. There's also a requirement for consistency with the housing element, the 2016 housing element, identifying the following housing goals and policies, and staff has identified where this project will be consistent with that, promoting development of a range of housing types, occurs the development of housing that meets needs of lower and moderate income households. So those are that. When it comes to zoning, the project must also be evaluated for compliance with the city's zoning ordinance, the property is subject to the city's R2 development standards, consisting of setbacks, densities, parking, landscaping, and structural requirements. Staff is of the opinion that the design, the height, the development intensity is consistent with the R2 development standards, and the project is consistent with the development in the vicinity. In terms of environmental review, the project is eligible for two categorical exemptions under the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, Section 15203B, new construction of no more than four dwelling units, or infill development. A notice of exemption has been prepared and will be filed citing that. On August ninth, twenty twenty, the planning commission considered the proposal. No one spoke for or against the project. The planning commission, on a vote of four oh, voted to recommend city council approval of the application. Staff recommends that the council adopt the, conduct the public hearing and consider approving the attached city council resolution approving site plan and design review application number twenty twenty-two dash zero one, based on the findings and conditions of approval contained in the staff report. That concludes my presentation, I'm happy to respond to questions.
Thank you, Miguel. Counsel, any questions or comments? As regards to myself, you know, obviously, that's, more housing is welcome in the city, and there's a need for that, so I am in support of this. I know when already through our planning commissioners. Counsel, any other questions or comments at this time?
Yes, definitely, whenever we have residential, single home, residential projects like this, I think it's a benefit to the entire community, which we are in high need of. Couple of questions and observations. One, what, and this is just for, for, I guess, information for the residents. What is the minimum parking spaces that are required for a duplex of this type?
Each unit is required to have two off-street parking spaces, each space measures nine feet by nineteen inches in width, so you're looking at basically twenty by twenty parking space.
Like, in this case, for residential, is there a need for handicap parking? And is, is that included?
Handicap parking is not required. If there's more units, that, that does come into play. The design includes the width that is large enough to allow and accommodate handicap parking.
When is handicap parking required?
It's my understanding that once you, you get over five units, then handicap parking is required.
Okay, just for clarification. And I think you mentioned this, and those, now, I think I learned something new. I need to drive by, I mean, not do a drive-by, but I actually need to drive by next time, and, and then look at the, you know, have a better idea of the location, but those pictures that you provided in your presentation, and you mentioned it, that they had already started building without the permits?
Yes, that's correct.
Have they stopped? Or are they continuing? That's all for right now?
The applicant applied for a building permit for the construction. When the building permit came into the planning department, we identified that it required a, a site plan and sign review application. We told him, you know, it doesn't make sense for him to construct, and he said, you know what, I have the desire to move forward ahead of the rainy season, so I want to get the foundation poured. And we said, you, you can do that, but you do so at your own risk, in the event that both the planning commission and city council recommend, and do not approve your project, then you've incurred all those costs, and, you know, the city won't compensate you for that. And the applicant, you know, willingly said, you know what, I want to take that risk, I want to get ahead of the rainy schedule. So right now, the property has been trashed to develop the, the foundation, that's all he's done at this point, so you see, you know, the foundation, which includes the water and sewer lines, things like that. But the applicants in full, you know, it's his idea, it's his risk, and he was made aware of that. Typically, we don't encourage people to develop until they have the entitlement approved, and once the entitlement is approved, then they can move forward. But I said, he, he pleaded, he said, you know what, I really want to get ahead of the rainy season, and so I want to move forward, because supplies are slow on coming, and I just want to get started.
Does the engineering department get involved in, or when does the engineering department get involved when it comes to something like this? Do they at all? Do they, or?
The engineering department gets involved at several stages. At the building stage, they get involved when it comes to addressing stormwater on site. You know, one of the things that we require the applicant to do is, you need to keep their stormwater on site, you need to show us. Initially, he wanted to develop the whole property in concrete, all of it, it's like, you're gonna force all the stormwater onto the street, and, you know, that may cause challenges for the city. And so, dealing with the engineering department, he was, he revises projects, so he will make sure that the stormwater remains on site in the landscaped areas. When it comes to the land use entitlement application, the project is referred to the city engineer, the city engineer reviews it to see if it meets all the public improvements, the street improvements, curb, gutter, sidewalk, and things like that. The alley was recently refurbished, the street frontage is fully developed, and there's curb, gutter, sidewalks, things like that. There was a desire to, to adjust the curb, he would need an encroach permit, his engineer would have to make contact with our engineering department to work out those details, but we have checks and balances throughout that, so the building permit stage, and when he submits an application, we route out the project for the engineering department's comments.
So, just to clarify, and I think you already said that, this is not, this process, or what they did, is not recommended, and is not endorsed, or approved, or encouraged by your department, or the, under the responsibility of the city. So they would end up being responsible in case there were more delays or not approved at all, right?
That's correct. He does the work at his own risk, at his own cost, if the project fails, or it's not passed, then he come back, he cannot come back to the city, he's like, oh, I did this willingly, and I assume all responsibility for that.
Where, was the planning commission presented with the same information, including the pictures?
The planning commission received the same staff report, I did not provide the same PowerPoint to them, but they had the same level of information.
But they were not aware that part of the building had been done prior to?
I'm not sure if they were, that, that did not come up as a discussion item. The commissioners are encouraged to visit the property, and, you know, ask staff if there's any questions.
Can you go to page number four of the report? I think it's page, page number four. Okay, yes, it is page number four. At the top, paragraph, where it talks about the planning commission held a public hearing?
Yes.
"The planning commission held a public hearing on August ninth, twenty twenty-two, to consider site plan and design review application number..." "So and so, the address, although this item was advertised as a public hearing, it was considered as a consent item and would be removed from consent. Should any of the planning commissioners or members of the audience present, remove it from consent to address any questions or comments." I went back to the agenda for, I wasn't present that day, but were, were the commissioners aware that, because it was, it should have been a public hearing, and then being on the consent agenda, under the consent agenda section, they could have done that, they could have pulled it, and then, out of, out of, out of consent? And then, my other question is, I was wondering if Legal was still here? And so the other question is for Legal. If, if an item was under the category for consent agenda, and it was not pulled, but it was published as a public hearing, would that be any, any issues, any concerns there?
May I add clarifying information?
Go ahead.
On the planning commission agenda, we have items that are consent, and we have items that are public hearing. Under items that are public hearing, they meet all the requirements, so there's no issues, the item can be removed from the joint public hearing, as we call it, and brought up for discussion. If there's no issues, and the planning commission says, you know what, anyone from the public want to pull this item for, to hear the public hearing presentation in the PowerPoint, we will go ahead and pull it. So it's really, it's not the traditional consent item, but it's a public hearing item that can be reviewed under consent, because we programmed that under the agenda. Many jurisdictions do that, I've done that in.
Yeah, so I'm just, because, like I said, I hate to have things come back later, and it's like, oh, I just, we get it done once, and we do it right, and just, we just save everybody time, so I just want to double-check, because you guys are the experts, I'm only the one reading this report. So, it was advertised as a public hearing, in the agenda, it was under consent, it was not removed from consent, right? There was no request?
On the agenda, it was listed under the public hearing, public hearings. Under public hearings, there can be a full public hearing, which will have a presentation, or it can be a joint, what we call a consent, an item approved under the public hearing as a consent item. In other jurisdictions where I've worked, there's multiple items that are advertised as public hearings, and they're very routine, and it's like, if somebody has a concern with an item that's on the public hearing item that's listed as the consent, they can pull it off. And that's what I liked it to do here at the last planning commission meeting. I scheduled under public hearings, but not as a regular consent item, but as a consent item, unless someone wants to pull it up, and we can schedule the public hearing, I mean, we can hold the public hearing. I don't know if the city attorney has a different...
So, and just to be clear, when you're talking about consent items, you're talking about at the planning commission level, not at the city council?
Yes.
Correct. So, because of the fact that there's a place to be appealed, and city council members can appeal it up to council, the way it was agendized meets all the legal requirements, based how I understand it, as it was presented?
So was that meets requirements? It does meet?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to double-check.
The way it was explained to me, because, again, I'm having to take it verbally, because I, I don't have, I don't have in front of me firsthand to look at, but yes.
Can you look at the paragraph on page four? Top paragraph, on item ten. I should have made a copy of that agenda from the planning commissioners. I don't think Monica can work that fast, or if you have it in your, double...
Yeah, it's legally sufficient.
It's what?
It's legally, it meets the legal requirement. Based off of what I'm looking at, that's in the agenda that you directed me to, it meets the legal requirements.
I'm just wondering if Miguel was looking for it.
It's in my file folder here.
All right. Then I...
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on. Any other comments at this time? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Public comment regarding this item? Anybody on the phone? All right, we'll bring it back to council. Anybody on the phone?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to make a comment. I'm not against the increased housing in the city, but I think in that area, especially the older parts of town, you really need to take into consideration the amount of parking you have and are providing, is a simple party gathering, it can just congest that road. Yes, I was hoping that you could move this over.
I'm sorry, we cannot understand anything you're saying. You're breaking up that time.
Oh, sorry about that, I guess there's some lag. Basically, there's another topic that's gonna be built right across the street, so in conjunction with all the other duplexes, it's really affecting the parking situation on that street, and I have a couple relatives who've had their driveways parked on when there's parties, and also, there's another apartment behind, on that street, that just bled the whole street with parking.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any other comments on the phone? All right, we'll bring it back to council, we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Counsel, any other questions or comments or motions?
Well, I'll make the motion, it looks like the planning commission also, you know, approved it four to zero, so...
All right, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Garcia, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilmember Jose Moran. Monica?
Roll call, councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Aguilar?
Yes, thank you.
Motion approved by a vote of three zero.
Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and move on to item number eleven, public hearing, site plan and design review application number twenty twenty dash zero two, and conditional use permit application twenty twenty dash two, SGM Moon Glow Inc. Truck Stop Complex, Moon Glow A, request to develop a truck stop travel center on eighteen-point-nine acre property zone, C3 Highway Service Commercial District, PF Public or Quasi Public Facilities District. Miguel, you got this?
I do, I was gonna ask, Monica, we can get the PowerPoint?
Do we have the applicant in the house? Yes, here. Thank you.
Okay, good evening once again, Miguel Galvez, contract planner for the city of Livingston. The item before you this evening is consideration of two items, site plan and design review application number twenty twenty dash zero two, and conditional use permit application number twenty twenty dash zero two, both for Moon Glow Truck Stop Complex. Specifically, these applications were for a request by SGM Moon Glow Incorporated to develop a truck stop travel center on an eighteen-point-nine acre property. The project would be developed in two phases. The subject property is located on the south side of Campbell Boulevard, east of Hammett Avenue. The property consists of four parcels, as highlighted in yellow there on the slide. I've included some pictures on each of the slides, the picture there is, this one's from the off-ramp looking eastward. The subject property has three general plan designations, PF Public Facility, it's kind of like gray or blue there, HC Highway Commercial, and CS Service Commercial. Properties to the west, across Hammett Avenue, are also designated as Highway Service Commercial. Properties to the north and the east are designated as, there's light industrial and service commercial there as well. Both Hammett Avenue and Campbell Boulevard are designated as arterial streets, one hundred and ten feet wide, they are also designated as a truck route in the general plan. In terms of zoning, the property site and surrounding properties have a zoning designation of C3 Highway Service Commercial. The portion of the property that's presently developed as a storm drain basin is zoned as PF, you can kind of see the PF there, kind of sticking out, it's public facility or quasi-public facilities zoning district. The surrounding properties, as I mentioned, the red are a C3, the blue up here is M1 Limited Industrial, and here are some views of the property, looking from Campbell Boulevard. Here is a recent area of the project site, surrounded developing sites, industrial way teased into Campbell Boulevard, there's a number of industrial projects, businesses that are there, including several textiles and a number of other units that are on industrial way. Arco is being proposed on the southwest corner of Hammett and Campbell Boulevard, and there's no application soon for any of the other vacant properties that are in that area. Here are recent pictures of the site, just to get acclimated, there is a great separation from the road, looking west on Campbell Boulevard, you can see it rises up to the overchange. Looking east on Campbell Boulevard, you can kind of see, it kind of goes down slope. And there's a view on the bottom left, the storm drain basin, that collects water from not only the project side, but also some of the adjacent streets, and some of the adjacent properties, I think Arco drains into this property as well. There's a view of the Arco side across Hammett Avenue. I can come back if there's some questions, or it's turning around the light, thank you. As I mentioned, the project will be developed in two phases. I've outlined the area in red, this is considered phase one, and I'll go into more detail about that. The blue area, the area outlined in blue, which is to the left, that is in phase the area outlined in blue, which is to the left, that is in phase two. Here's a composite of the whole site plan. It will be served by a total of five access points onto Campbell Boulevard. The existing stormwater basin on the left will be filled, and a new basin will be developed on the east side of the property, as highlighted in yellow there. So the basin that exists will be relocated. This is a little close-up. Phase one will consist of the following. It includes, consists of a 13,030 square foot travel center, which includes a convenience market, two quick service restaurants, one with a drive-through. It'll include restrooms and showers for travelers. It will include passenger fueling stations under a 9,720 foot square foot canopy, four above ground storage tanks. There will be parking for both passengers, passenger vehicles and RVs. There's 127 parking spaces. An RV sewer dump station will be towards the bottom. There'll be a dog park. It'll be landscape lawn, if you will. There'll be one entrance onto Campbell Boulevard from this area where the travel center, the convenience store is. There'll only be one at this point. With phase two, there will be a second entrance way on the left there. There's no vehicle access that's proposed from this part to the east, which will be the truck center area. Phase two, as I mentioned, will consist of a second entrance driveway and two quick service restaurants there on the left. Both those quick service restaurants will have drive-throughs. There will be one drive-through that'll be connected to the convenience market there in the middle. In that convenience market, like I said, there'll be two fast food restaurants or quick serve restaurants. The rest of the project, phase one also includes a divulmated a 7,200 square foot tire center building. It includes a quick service restaurant, excuse me. It includes diesel gasoline fuel stations, a truck scale, and parking for 127 trucks. These are semi-trucks. And as I mentioned, they'll have fuel, storage containers. And there'll be three access points there onto Campbell Boulevard. The last area is a new storm drain basin. It will be sized to handle the stormwater from, stormwater runoff from the site, adjacent properties that are already receiving it from the existing basin, as well as some of the existing adjacent road rightaways. The applicant has submitted a preliminary landscape plan. All the landscape plans will have to be reviewed to meet compliance with the water efficiency landscape ordinance, both the irrigation system and the plants. There'll be robust landscaping along the south side as it fronts Highway 99 and along Campbell Boulevard and Hammett Avenue, as you can see. Landscaping is proposed around the storm drain basin as shown on the preliminary plan. The convenience market, as I mentioned earlier, there'll be two quick service restaurants. There'll be showers and restrooms and other retail goods sold there. Here are some proposed elevations. There'll be signage on the buildings, and there'll be a sign plan for the whole site, although that hasn't been submitted. In terms of issues, here's a summary of the issues that have been identified. There's an issue dealing with land use designations. I'll go through each of these in more detail. The stormwater basin, I think we've been able to address that. Signage, there's a lot line adjustment that needs to be completed, and making sure that we meet fire suppression requirements. We also had an issue with water line improvements, and there's traffic impacts and mitigation measures that we'll go through in a minute. In a little more detail, under the land use designation, as I mentioned, the existing storm drain basin is designated in the general plan as a public facility, and the zoning is also PF Public or Quasi Public Facility. That's a concern with the project because commercial uses are not allowed in that, in the PF zone. So a rezone and general plan amendment will have to be processed to allow the phase two quick service restaurants to be developed. As I mentioned, propose, the quick service restaurants are proposed under phase two, and so, and the way the staff report is written is that phase one would be recommended for approval, and phase two would only be approved until a rezone and general plan amendment is considered and approved by the city council. It would be rezoned from public facility to C3 Highway Service Commercial, and the general plan would be amended from public facility to highway commercial. This illustrates kind of how the PF kind of stands out there on both the general plan and zoning map. The stormwater basin, presently it serves the site and its adjacent streets, and with the relocation going to the east side, we're looking at perhaps developing a regional plan, perhaps involving a dual-use basin at the Max Foster Sports Complex. We met with the applicant, and due to timing considerations, staff has, you know, it makes sense and staff is willing to proceed forward as proposed, to allow the project to move forward with a stub for a future connection to a regional stormwater plant. One of the issues with a stormwater basin plan is the city would have to prepare a master plan to show the whole tributary area, how the water will be collected and transported to a regional stormwater basin. And we haven't done that, and it makes sense to allow this project to move forward, and then it can tie in later at a future, at a future time. As I mentioned, a signage plan is not submitted. That will be required as part of the application. It'll be subject to the C3 and freeway standards. The lot line adjustment, a lot line adjustment was applied for. It was approved, but the lot line adjustment was not recorded, so it needs to be perfected to show the current development configuration. Fire access and suppression, both our building department and fire staff will be reviewing it to make sure that it meets all of our access requirements and building code requirements for that. On water line improvements, initially, the applicant had proposed to extend the water line only partially to the street, only partially along Campbell Boulevard. You can see that through the blue outline there. Staff, the engineering department requested that the water line be connected all the way down to Twine Avenue to allow a loop system to maintain both volume and pressure, and to prevent any type of stagnation of water. Initially, the applicant was concerned about that in terms of timing and cost, but since the planning commission meeting, the applicant said, has commented that, yeah, they are willing to move forward with allowing the loop of the water system. In terms of traffic impacts and mitigation measures, as I mentioned, Campbell Boulevard is a truck route, so you're gonna be seeing a lot more truck access, and so there'll be design issues that have to be incorporated into that. There'll be a traffic signal that will be installed there at Campbell and Hammett, and each of the adjacent properties will be paying their fair share of the cost for those improvements. The traffic impact analysis was prepared as part of our environmental document. It included frontage improvements. It included that Caltrans had to approve the design of the interchange out there, the intersection, excuse me, as I mentioned, their fair share of costs. And there's five other mitigation measures that are listed in the environmental assessment document. The design of the intersection had to be reviewed by Caltrans. That caused some delay, but that has since been approved. Caltrans has signed off on that. And here's the final design that was approved. And this will be used as a basis for any development in that area for the Arco, for the property northwest and northeast. And again, this is an intersection that will be signalized. It's, I understand, I understand that the city will be receiving some funding to install it and will be reimbursed by the developers as development takes place. In terms of the general plan and zoning, all documents, all applications have to be reviewed for conformance with the general plan. In terms of land use policies, we have the land use element, and we have the circulation element, which identify the type of uses that are allowed, both in the service commercial and the neighborhood commercial zone districts, and these are consistent with those. The application is consistent with the street classification. As I mentioned, Campbell Boulevard will be widened to a five lane arterial. It will be developed to truck route standards. When it comes to a level of service, this is rather technical, but for many years, traffic congestion was measured on level of service, like going from A to F, where F is really bad, you're stuck in gridlock. And the city adopted a level of service C for street congestion, and the traffic impact analysis was identifying that this would be lower than that would be level of service D. However, the state has since changed its mind in reviewing projects to eliminate greenhouse gases. They've gone to a different type of metrics, vehicle miles traveled is now the mechanism. So even though our general plan level identifies level of service C, it is preempted by the state that says, no, now you guys need to consider vehicle miles traveled. And the environmental document has identified that this is not an issue. The level C is okay. Excuse me, level of service D. As I mentioned, with all types of developments, in the C3 zone, a use permit is required because it will allow restaurants with a drive-through, and it will allow gasoline and service stations. So the use permit is to allow these specific uses. Again, the convenience market, the quick service restaurants, and things like that. So that's the purpose of the use permit. The site plan design review application is required for all new development to consider the design of the building and things like that. When it comes to the site plan and design review, we only received floor plans and elevations for the convenience market. We did not receive a site plan design review, elevations and floor plans for the tire center, so they'll have to come in through a separate application. Each of the two quick service restaurants that'll come in at phase two will be subject to their own site plan design review application. And again, going back to zoning, the PF zone does not presently allow commercial uses, and there's any development that is proposed in the PF zoned area will have to go through a rezone and general plan amendment to allow that. And that will happen under phase two, excuse me, subsequently. When we consider conditional use permits, conditional use permits are revocable. The intent of the use permit is to consider compatibility with permitted uses in the area. Basically, we try to identify if there's any nuisances, like from light, noise, smoke, odor, dust, vibration. And if those uses are continued, then they could serve for revocation. But in any event, the zoning ordinance allows a use permit to be approved, subject to these findings, that one, the proposed uses must be adequate in size and shape, the streets must be adequate to carry traffic, that public facilities are available to serve the proposed uses, that the proposed conditions are necessary to preserve the general welfare of the neighborhood of the city. So these are specific findings that have to be approved as part of the use permit resolution of... As I mentioned, the site plan design review application, it allows the city to evaluate and ensure that it will maintain compatibility, harmony, and appearance, a reduction of negative impacts, and provides an opportunity for neighbors, property owners to comment on the proposed project. On the environmental review, the applicant hired an environmental consultant. They prepared an initial study, and it resulted in a mitigated negative declaration. So that resulted in that there are no environmental effects that can, that will be significant due to the mitigation measures that were adopted that would reduce the project's effects to a level that would be less than significant. To that end, a mitigation monitoring and reporting program is incorporated into the project approval. So not only do these conditions have to be met, but we have to monitor and report that they are being met. The environmental document was out for a 30-day public review from December 2020 through January 212021. We had five responders, and those responses were incorporated into the environmental document. The planning commission held a public hearing on August 9th this year to consider the proposal. No members of the public spoke against the project. The applicant was there to answer questions. On a vote of three to zero, the planning commission approved the three resolutions with a recommendation to the city council to adopt an initial study, mitigate a negative declaration with a mitigation monitoring reporting program, two, approve the conditional use permit application 2020-02, and three, approve the site plan design review application number 2020-02 for the Moon Glow project. Staff recommends after conducting the public hearing that the city council consider adopting the three resolutions that are included in your packet. They're the equivalent to what the planning commission considered. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know we have representatives from the environmental consultant base camp, Charlie Simpson, and we have a city engineer, Noe Martinez, that's also available to answer questions. The applicant and his agents are here as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Miguel, for the presentation. Very thorough. Appreciate it. Counsel, any questions or comments at this time? I just have a couple of things. If approved, what's the timeframe, timeline for like phase one, if we were to approve those resolutions tonight? Do we have an idea?
Are you talking about development?
Yeah.
I think the applicant can speak to that.
You guys want to introduce yourselves and just answer that question in regards to timeframes or timeline? I know, you know, people always want to know, regardless of development, what does that look like?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Rod Hawkins, Hawkins and Associates Engineering, and Representative Goldie Singh and his father, their land consultant at Templeton. So basically, we've got construction documents to go through and go through review, city review of all those documents. But everything that I've been told is, get through it as quickly as possible. Let's get this thing built, so.
Perfect, thank you. All right, counsel, any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I got a question. Well, I know the governor signed a bill for electric vehicles for 2035, you know, that, that car lots have to start selling anyways. Is there gonna be any electric parking spots? I mean, even for big rigs, those are coming here in the future. Is there gonna be any spots for those? I mean, since, I mean, that's just around the corner.
Any charging stations, stuff like that?
Hello. Yes, there are, there's parking spots, Tesla chargers and all that in the front part of the store.
Do we know about how many? I mean, you guys are thinking as of now?
Thinking maybe 12, if I remember correctly, but it could be a little bit more or less.
12 for regular POV's and...
Tesla chargers you're talking about, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's spots for that.
And what about for big rigs? Because those are coming here soon.
Which ones?
Big rigs, the semis?
Lexus, biggers.
I mean, do you guys have...
Honestly, I don't know when that's gonna be, maybe 20, 30 years. You never know what's gonna happen. So we will adopt accordingly what we have to.
That's the only thing I have.
In regards to another question, just in general for traffic mitigation, I know, Vanessa, I know we have some money coming to redesign or address that intersection and sign it. I mean, that's still the plan, correct?
Yes, mayor, that's the plan. We will be using the Measure V money to move forward with the project of the redesign of the street and have development pay their fair share for that project.
Perfect, thank you. Just in regards to mitigating any concerns with fire, I mean, it was obviously fire consulted, usually the process, right, in regards to access and then all that, that was taken care of and discussed with fire?
Yes. The project referrals were sent to our Cal Fire, and so they were invited to respond on that. We were, we also sent those to our local fire captain to respond. They will complete their review as part of the building permit process.
Okay.
They look at both access and hazard and emergency routes, things like that. So all that will be finalized through the building permit process.
All right, thank you. And we're to, do you guys own any other Moon Glow truck stops?
Yeah, actually, I'm from South Carolina. So is my corporation. That's my father. So we have truck stops, we have gas stations, we have other businesses. We actually have farming business in Charleston as well.
Okay.
Pretty spread out.
Okay, awesome. Um, any ideas of what kind of restaurants were you guys bringing in, trying to bring in?
Uh, probably Indian restaurant, uh, talking to Subway. I did speak, spoken to Arby's a while back, but then COVID hit, everything got delayed. So that's so and so. But definitely burger joint, uh, Subway, the the top QSRs. My plan is I'll maybe Starbucks or something else. Just get this thing developed, basically.
Got you. Okay. Counsel, any other questions? I don't think this would have been a regular meeting if I didn't ask any questions. That is, that is correct. So. What are you guys laughing at? It's just an inside joke. Cause I'm always asking questions, so. But um. I think I already know the answer, but I just have to ask, uh, for the proposed or the idea of having a small dog park. Is it just going to be just open grass area? And where is that at in the map? Because I, it was kind of hard for me to find it anywhere.
It's all right here.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just open land to.
So so just.
For truckers, you know, some that have.
Yeah, yeah.
Stop they want to walk around.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure, you've seen other truck stops.
Yeah, TA has one. Yeah, I think TA has one too.
Yeah, TA loves all, they all have.
Just a little spot where they can go and kind of do a little little thing with the, okay, all right. I mean, I I was hoping to ask and, you know, you would say like, you know what, we're going to develop half an acre of, you know, the fence and everything and. In the future, right? Maybe? I'm just joking. All right, so um, let's see. I was going to ask the same thing about the restaurants. People have been asking a lot about it and. Any hopes and well, well, maybe just food for for thought and just like a sit in dining, like a diner kind of thing, you know?
Well, that rest in phase two, those options are open. That's why, you know, want to get that PF thing changed to commercial then phase two. There's a lot of options I'm looking at. So that could be anything.
And I will have more questions in the next phase. I, and I don't know who is it that that I have to thank for having to read all this? Okay, yeah. All right. Thank you. That's it. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Any public comment? Anybody on the phone? All right, we're going to bring it, close the public hearing and bring it back to council for any motions.
I'll make the motion.
The motion by Mayor Potem Garcia. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Jose Moran. Monica?
Roll call, councilmembers Moran?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of three zero.
Congratulations, guys. Looking forward to seeing your project come to fruition. So thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you for working with our our departments. Appreciate it. Thank, nice. Thank you, Miguel, for your hard work. Good job. All right, we have one more item, discussion potential action items. Uh, I don't know, 12 discussion direction for the user remaining American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds. Garpal? Thank you, guys. Keep it down, Garpal.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, let's go on.
Ready? Okay, so at the budget hearing or budget workshop, it was requested that we have a follow on discussion and that we bring back to council. Information on how other local agencies have used their American Rescue Plan Act funds. Um, I did pull information from the League of California Cities publication. They have issued on March 9th that says the American Rescue Plan, one year later, how cities are using this transformative funding. Included in the admin report is a list of those cities that were cited in that publication and the ways in which they have used those funds. As a follow on to that and included in the admin report is information that the Department of Treasury has issued a final rule. And in that final rule, it stipulates how those uh, unallocated dollars are to be spent. And you can see from the list of. Available uses as well as the list of cities who have allocated those dollars for specific purposes. Um, that we have some options in front of us. We do know that it was recommended by staff that we use. Uh, some of the funds and as a reminder, we have 588,000 that is unallocated. That we use some of those funds to put in fiber optic, which would alleviate some of the issues that we've had during council meetings on the. Uh, live streaming of our council meetings. In addition, uh, another request was made by staff for the recplex to ex, to include fiber optic, not only to the council chambers, but also to that location, which will provide after school services and other. Uh, internet required uh, activity for the staff as well as for the users of that facility. I did make a request to Frontier to get a quote for what those two different fiber optic uh, extensions would cost. I've not yet heard back. So unfortunately, I can't come. Tonight with an amount that would be remaining, um, absent that recommendation. Um, but I did want to provide, as was requested, an informational packet for you on what the funds can be used for and what other cities have used those funds for.
Thank you so much for bringing this information back to us and having a discussion item. I mean, I think it's a good idea to for fiber optics, especially for the new recplex, uh, regards to. I know a lot of kids or a lot of families aren't able to afford or have, you know, uh, internet connections. But we found out. That was the case during COVID. A lot of kids, you know, schooling from home, that was an issue. So I think providing that service to the community. Where kids could go there and connect to the internet and do homework. I think it's a good idea, a good way of spending this money. Using it towards that. Uh, I know we've had issues with our connectivity here in the chambers and. Having that in place could facilitate better um, communication or better. Outreach to our community in regards to council meetings or other important events here in the chambers. But yeah, it'd be nice to know how much it will cost, you know, so um, I appreciate that. Are you looking into it? I mean, I did see that I went down the list of the cities how they've been using it. It's interesting to see how, you know, some people. There's different ways they've used it and, you know, it's interesting to see like a new library branch or, um, you know, bike use or transportation options. Some people use it for broadband project. Um, what, my curiosity is like assess a county wide system for primary. Primary for first responders and then another city also used it for first responder services. Do we know exactly what kind of programs?
So police and fire was heavy heavily um, funded using these dollars and and the. One of the approaches, uh, as as previously identified in the in the narrative from the Department of Treasury is that if it is a. A replacement for lost revenues. So what you'll find here is some of the um, adoption or allocation of those dollars was due to a loss of revenue. And so um, the funding availability for those purposes were slightly different than what we experienced because we we didn't actually have a loss of revenue. So our allocations may not be fully aligned with those that would have funded public uh, safety because they didn't have other revenues coming in.
So in regards to the um, water and sewer infrastructure outlined here. So just in general, right, in Livingston, that's always a um, a situation or a. Item of concern in the community, you know, our quality, our water quality and. Uh, that's always something that's brought up to myself. And I know as a council member, that was something that was always brought up to me, our water quality. So for, if we were able to use any money towards uh, improving our water quality, would that be uh, fitted within the criteria?
Yeah, so we actually did allocate $2 million for water well number 12. Yeah, our our water comes primarily from the groundwater source and so. Wellhead treatment is certainly something we could look into. And so the purpose of tonight's discussion is for. You to let us know how, what you'd like us to investigate and come back with estimates for so that we can then decide how best to allocate. So if that's something that you'd like us to research, I could certainly work with Tony and come up with uh, getting quotes for additional wellhead treatment or other uh, water.
Yeah, filtration or whatever. Um, just, yeah, but definitely, because that's something of concern. If we could use this kind of funding towards. Uh, improving the water quality in our city, I think that'd be a good way of uh, investing in that money uh, towards. Obviously, as a supporter of public safety, I don't know how we would be able to use it in PD or or fire. Yeah, go, go for it.
May, if I may, just before we do the comment on public safety, but um, the water and sewer infrastructure, the TCP. Um, upgrades that we are planning on doing from our engineers. Comments and and the information that they've presented before to us, we are looking at about a $24 million investment. And that is coming from the grant funding because we are now eligible for additional grants. And 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 that's how we're going to fund and and that's how we're going to pay for the TCP compliance. What we are doing here, because this money and and we're looking at that and it's about a two year project, the TCP $24 million that we're supposed to do. Um, the the other items that we're looking here, because we also have a deadline for us to spend this money. Otherwise, we would have to give it back to the pod and it has to get redistributed to other agencies that may have projects to use it. So we're trying to identify projects that are short term and that they're 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 ready to go and build. So those are the the items that we're trying to put forward so that way we can, we can benefit our community. We can put some good infrastructure in place. And this money can be utilized within the timeframe that we're supposed to use it and and chief can make the public.
So. And talking about public safety, and this is something I hadn't even broached with Vanessa yet. Um, within the last year and a half to two years, we've done a complete upgrade at the police department on the radio system. And it works phenomenal. But one of the things that we continue to run into is the problems with the phone system. I'm by no means complaining about. Our police building. We're very fortunate. I often tell people, we've got the nicest police department in the county and that's, that's not a lie. That's, it's a fact. But our phone system is is annotated. It needs to be upgraded. I don't know if that's something that we could utilize this money for. But just in the nine months that I've been here, there's been at least five or six times where the phone system goes down. And when it goes down, that means the 911 phones are down. And that means that we have to rely on other agencies to take over our 911 calls. So if that's something that we could use to upgrade that phone system, I don't have any numbers for you now. But that would be something as far as public safety goes and it kind of covers police and fire because our dispatchers answer the fire calls as well. They would, the money would be useful for that.
We'll have to look into that. Um, I'm imagining VoIP, so voice over internet phone system. So so it's it's tied to a broadband.
Has a broadband component.
It has a broadband component, but I don't know if the regulations would encompass that work, but I'm absolutely happy to look into it.
Right now, we're we're basically working on an analog system to where we have to wait. We're at the mercy of. We've got part of it's AT&amp;T because and then then part of it's the Department of Justice. Because of the clefs information that's coming over uh, an old analog line. Our officers don't have the access to information that they need. So I mean, we, that's something we definitely need to look in to to making an upgrade for. That's, I just wanted to, you said public safety, so a light went off.
No, definitely. I mean, another thing, I know like the city of Irvine used the development of parks and open spaces. I know there's always, I mean, there's been talk about a. A dog park and a skateboard park. I think maybe looking into something like that.
So we'll have to look at the criteria around that. If those projects were approved because it was a loss of revenue associated with those improvements that were maybe already budgeted.
Gotcha.
Um, but revenues fell short, but we can certainly look at the criteria.
Okay.
Around those kinds of recommendations and see if we qualify either based on our designation as an entity that might be disadvantaged in some way or. Uh, some other criteria, excuse me, within the regulation.
Perfect. Thank you. But yeah, the public safety, the phone system, I think it'd be a good investment. Uh, especially if there's a delay in service or a potential of delay of service. Definitely it needs to be addressed. Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, if there's any potential and we were able to fix that, um, that'd be, that'd be great. But that's our just my thoughts in general. Uh, counsel?
Yeah, I gotta see if we can look into an AC for the back room here. I don't know if it falls under that. So for our future council.
We do have other facility improvement funds we might want to use, but I, but I think that's a good call out for uh, facility needs.
Yeah, I'm just looking out for the future, for the council. Thank you.
Definitely.
That's a good idea, actually. Good point. I second that. So um, I think a couple of things have been already mentioned. And deadline is still 2023, right?
So December 31st, 2024 is the is the spend by date, but that doesn't mean. We should allocate as soon as possible is what I would want to say, yeah.
So you, so December 31st, 2024 allocated or spent?
Spent.
Okay, so that's, okay, spent 12, 31, 24. All right, so. Could this funds be used to purchase? Land for future park and green space areas?
No, not under the current, the current legislation doesn't.
Okay.
Call for that. So again, if it was due to a revenue shortfall for something we were already anticipating doing and we could justify it that way.
Yeah.
Um, but.
All right.
That's not something we have had to forsake because of budget shortfalls.
Yeah. Hmm, all right. And so my other question, I don't know who was approved. Who's this for? Who can answer that? It goes back to. To, uh, I I do agree that we that we need broadband to our buildings and, you know. I think it'd be a good idea to have that, that at our, at the next uh, rec center. So, but why does it have to be done by Frontier? Or is there, I mean, does it have to be done by who currently provides service? Or could we, could we contract with any Joe whatever? Company and and install that?
So we would have to check uh, the current available providers in the area. If there is but one, then we're limited. If there are other providers within the area, we can certainly get quotes from multiple providers and and bring that back.
Okay, so then that brings me to my question is that can only be done by current internet providers in the area, right? Okay.
Yes.
And. And. My understanding is that we have two in the area, which is Frontier and Spectrum or. Or AT&amp;T or whatever the, but I think Spectrum right now. And do they have certain areas that they? Service? And how is that broken down or is that my understanding?
So we can certainly ask for quotes from any local service provider and then they can let us know what their available options and costs would be.
Okay, so, but it doesn't have to be just Frontier.
If there is another service provider.
It, yeah, it is my understanding that Frontier, it's the only company that services our area right now. They own the rights to service this zip code. And we can definitely try to find out other carriers, but they're the company that service and we are. Um, I believe maybe Charter, it's another one because when.
Charter is Spectrum, I think.
When our, um, when our YouTube streaming has gone out because Frontier is not available, it kicks in the second, but it's lower than Frontier. We will, we will check.
Yeah, so and and then the reason I ask is because eventually I still have not gone to anybody really explaining to me. Why? One company owns the rights, I guess, you know, like.
Like, I really don't know, so I'd like for somebody to tell me, like, and finally get that question answered, because I've been asking the same, I've been wondering the same thing for quite some time, and I don't know. And I know that that was probably from a long time ago, but I would like to learn more about how that works because a lot of people complain about Frontier and, and then also, you know, so just, just, just more knowledge how that works. And whenever we do something, we want to make sure that we do it and whoever comes in, they're able to, is that how it is normally? If they leave and then whoever later comes in, they can use whatever was left behind?
So historically, it was done through franchise agreements, which I haven't looked at myself, but I'm sure that you have one in place. That was more for the old style that's gone in, and now it's more based just on economies and who wants to come in and make investments in certain areas and things of that nature. And, you know, in addition to that, there's other technologies that aren't even just wire-based, but they would be more for redundant technologies, which is, you know, Starlink and stuff like that. It's a Starlink business, but I don't think you'd want to rely on that as a primary. That would be a backup type of service if everything else goes down, you still have, you can still get stuff. So, so we, I mean, I'd be happy to, or Vanessa can pull the franchise agreement and go over with you. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to go over with you and kind of, we can, you know, put together the history and where we're at. But largely, at this point in time, it's going to be market-driven.
So that would be the franchise agreement, okay. All right, and then looking at some of the ideas and examples of how other, other cities have used similar funds, improving walkability, bike use, and development of parks, open spaces. And I'm just wondering how, like, for instance, Grover Beach, they would be able to... Because they have $150,000 to support local nonprofits, how would that work? Was that considering only if previously that the city was funding or supporting them? Then it would be justified that to continue supporting it?
Likely that would be the scenario. Under the American Rescue Plan Act information from California, from the Legislative Analyst Office, there was specific emergency rental assistance that was provided, homeowner assistance that was provided, energy and water utility bill assistance, Medi-Cal, emergency housing. There was a slew of items that were eligible under the original plan. But the final rule did limit us to what's listed in the admin report. So it could have been that those prior to the final rule that allocated funds for a specific purpose, prior to the adoption of the final rule, were eligible to use those for those funds, which were likely associated with a loss of revenues. But we could look further into that, if that's something you're interested in understanding. But it's not something that's on the final rule is eligible for us to allocate these unallocated dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Any other ideas, Mr. Garcia, Mayor Potem Garcia? We're good with...
No, I'm good.
All right, so staff, do you guys feel comfortable with some of the ideas we went over?
Yeah, just to restate, I have checking the broadband providers to see if there are any others in the area and getting quotes for that. We can certainly look into water quality. We do know based on the existing list of projects that the dollars that we have available may not cover much of that work, but we can certainly provide information related to water quality. We heard the request on updating the phone system, and we'll check on eligibility for using that to upgrade to a VoIP system, which would be broadband-related, and we'll find out if that's really eligible. And I will look for the AC for the council conference room outside of this funding, but I definitely hear the request. Yeah, of course.
Okay, we're going to take out for public comment at this time. Any public comment regarding this item? Anybody? Anybody on the phone? Or bring it back to council. It sounds like you guys got plenty of direction, so we'll look forward to some of that information. We're going to go ahead and move on to council direction and future items. Counsel, any future agenda items at this time?
I'm not sure if this would, I'm just wondering what happened with the, with, when are we going to talk about the use of the, what used to be the barber shop? Is that going to be an item?
Oh, yeah, that's something that...
So if we can have that, oh, I don't know, is there, is there a time, like?
So the upgrades were incorporated in the budget, so we were going to move forward with the structural updates to the barber shop within the budgeted amounts that were approved back in the beginning of August.
So there's no need for...
We're going to, right, we were going to repurpose some of the items and the windows and the painting, we have that, we budgeted for that, and it was approved. So we were going to move forward and repurpose the building so recreation can have a usable space for classes.
So there's no need for an additional item, since it already got passed?
That is correct, it already got approved.
Perfect.
My understanding that, because we had not gone and talked about an approval use for it, is it being used right now?
Recreation wants to hold some senior classes and some children's classes right now. I think they're storing some of the items for this centennial. But once we can repurpose that, we will be able to use it for those classes.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, we're going to go ahead and adjourn our meeting at 9:30, 4:00 p.m.